... Honorable members of the House, the House of Representatives, and all the other committees, please. I would like to call the extra town council meeting for Monday, March 1st. Um, we'll take the whole call. All agenda items are subject to review, consideration, discussion, and/or possible action by the town council. Further, the town council bylaws, section 119, the forum, the order must be preserved during town council meetings. No person, member of the public, or town staff shall make statements, action, conversation, or otherwise interrupt a council member or delay the proceeding of the town council meeting. Please take the roll.
Dan Patterson?
Yes.
Maria Marcy?
Yes.
Diane Allen?
Here.
Olivia Francisco?
Here.
Here.
Okay. Now it's an announcement, but we don't have anything. Number four, approval of the agenda order. Is everything, anybody need to move anything on?
I have to remove January 6th.
That's in the consent agenda. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, I have to move one thing.
Okay, approval of consent agenda.
Motion on the agenda.
Oh, motion to approve the agenda order. Sorry, so what?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Olivia, you said under approval of consent agenda, January 6th?
Six, yes, and 13th.
I need to pull January, uh, I mean, not January, uh, 13th.
You too, on the 13th, Olivia.
Okay, I need to.
The 13th, that would be.
Yes.
And Diane, you will look at the 13th.
I was on the stage. February 3rd.
Right, this is February 3rd. February 3rd?
Yeah.
You were here, weren't you?
Right, but I had, there's a mistake on my, this one.
Oh, okay.
So, we're up here. And I want, I had a question on bill sheet too, so.
Okay, so we'll remove the bill sheet?
I did.
Remove the bill sheet.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, communications, Cal?
I'm all set, thank you.
Diane?
I'm up.
Ready? Okay, so.
What is your major offense, you nut nut?
I need to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So what?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see. I don't see, number one, bill sheet, you had a question, right?
Yeah, I, I did. Just a question for Rob. I'm gonna get out of here.
I had one question, see if you can pull it out, 'cause it's gonna be a couple lines, I think I know the answer.
So, for the salt, just a question, I know it's like thirty-six grand, so, that, what, how, how much have you spent for the season so far, or is that carrying on to the next season in your salt shed?
We have a full shed at this point, uh, so it will go into next season if it's not used.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that's a high amount, so, pretty high now since the last time I saw it, so.
Well, you gotta look at the season that we've had, we've been putting a lot out.
No.
The smallest, the storms, we're putting the same amount out.
Yeah.
Ice, instead of inches, we got ice, it's even more dangerous, so.
Yeah, I understand, alright.
Why are you having that out? I had one question for Maria. Uh, all through the bill sheet, different departments, Elon Financial, what is that?
That is the town credit card from Washington Trust.
Okay.
So replace Chase.
Okay, 'cause it changed.
Correct.
'Cause I'm sitting there, I've never seen that on there.
Okay, so, one more, um, for, uh, the, uh, seven forty-two, ten, ten yard old building expense, uh, so what, how much do we actually spend per month on that building to keep it up? I know this has thirteen ninety-five of that.
Um, so the, it's been about, um, a little over eight hundred dollars for oil every three weeks. The internet is of, um, nine ninety-nine dollars for the internet, and then electricity's been around five hundred.
Okay, thank you. And that's it, just that?
Oh, there's some security, uh, that may not be on the bill sheet.
You gotta heat stick in there.
Insurance built in to our fault, you know, the entire insurance.
So the heating system is oil?
Oil.
Water, thank you.
Okay, so, motion to approve the bill sheet?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's see, I'll do a motion to approve the council minutes of January 6th, January, well, we'll do that one first, 'cause Olivia's gotta confuse herself in that. All in favor to approve the minutes of January 6th, under January 6th executive session?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, man, the meeting minutes for February 3rd, regular meeting, February 3rd executive session, um, special meeting, February 10th, and the special meeting executive session for February 10th, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And number seven, that's Diane and Olivia, uh, town council special meeting minutes for February 13th, two thousand twenty-five.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, Calvin second.
I move to approve.
Okay.
I abstain.
Diane and Olivia are number seven. Number six, vacancies and appointments, personnel board?
No.
Resignations, none. Appointments, Exeter Rural Way and Preservation Trust Committee members, three needed to serve a four-year term beginning date of appointment. Number two, Board of Tax and Assessment Review Member to serve an expired term ending May 6th, two thousand twenty-seven? Nothing. Board of Tax and Assessment Review Alternate Member to serve three-year term beginning date of appointment?
Nothing.
Okay. Expiring terms, none. Public hearings, none. Number eight is public comment. Comments are not limited to items on this agenda, however, items not on this agenda will only be heard and not acted upon by the town council unless they are of emergency nature. There's a three-minute time limit per person, fifteen-minute maximum time allowed for this agenda item. Section forty-two dash forty-six dash six, the Gilson Meetings Act in the town council bylaws prohibit the town council from deliberating, debating, or acting on previously unposted matters during the public comment section of the agenda. State law prohibits the town council from acting or voting about any such matter except under emergency circumstances. The town council may only, if warranted, refer such matters to an appropriate committee, to another body, or official to post the matter for consideration in a properly noticed future meeting. Accordingly, because the council is obliged not to respond, the immediate silence of the town council members relative to any matter raised by a speaker during public comment may not be construed as any endorsement, confirmation, act of insin- in support, or overtaking of any position concerning a matter raised by a member of the public under public comment. Okay. Is your stopwatch ready?
We have, we have a stopwatch.
Uh, first is.
So I got what I'm told to do it, so.
Sheila, Boobry, Reynolds? Reynolds, I'm sorry.
Reynolds is fine.
Yeah, three minutes, Sheila.
Okay. First off, um, as you know, I had an incident on a ski hill road in October, and, um, with a truck coming out at a great rate, great speed, and, um, got into, um, a little bit of an accident, and I was concerned about the safety of the road, and came and asked the town council, uh, what could be done about it, and you all graciously wrote to the Rhode Island DOT, and since then, they have actually come out and put two signs, one on either side of the bridge stating that it's an arrow bridge, and they did put speed limit signs, about five different speed limit signs up and down the road. Hopefully, um, this will help with the safety of the road, and I just wanna thank you for sending the letter, and the DOT's quick work.
Thank you.
Second, I have a second thing, is the, um, section F2, I see you're putting, uh, possible removal of the public comment, and I was a public comment, I'm just saying, I think it's a very helpful thing to have on the agenda, so I, I don't understand why, I'm sure we'll find out at some point, but I would like to say that, um, I for one liked it there, because at least it gives us a chance to come and say something if we need to.
Good, good job. Wait a minute.
Oh.
Oh, I got it. Just clear it.
Next is Asa Davis. Uh, Asa, there was a discrepancy last month, you claimed, so we're gonna give you an extra minute, you get four minutes.
In seventeen ninety-one, free speech was approved in the Bill of Rights to keep government responsive to the public it serves. Since eighteen forty-two, it's in our Rhode Island Constitution, and popular, even the subject of paintings to help war efforts. When I signed my Air Force contract decades ago, I wasn't sure why. I took the oath to support and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, but just words. Still not sure till that winter, seven a.m. war history class, we saw a picture, a little Polish girl on a potato field crying over a dead sister, straight quiet, looked like Stuka. That instant, I was sure, I knew why. I never asked again. We're a nation of laws, not men. I don't care who you voted for, I don't care if you like or agree with what I say. Criticizing in public isn't fun, but it's how you improve. Nobody learns anything listening to echoes of how good they are. Without blunt, honest feedback, you don't know what you're doing wrong. Free speech makes public officials work harder, but makes life better, because it results in a more responsive government. Words you say might get you jailed or killed in Russia, China, North Korea. We're not there yet, we're still different. I do care about our country, our system, our way of life. These are under attack, not from outside. In D.C., an unelected South African billionaire decimates wide swaths of our institutions and gains personally. His willing accomplices are elected and appointed U.S. officials. Internationally, our beacon example of hope, liberty, and democracy dims. Poland and Ukraine are less than six hundred miles apart. Both countries have a long history of suffering in the German and Russian groups, one still is. This leads to that. I'm not interested in seeing our founding documents trampled on at any level. Cowards are afraid of criticism. Cowards stifle speech they don't like, words they don't wanna hear. Cowards filter the public's pocket to line their own. Cowards think laws and rules are meant for other people, not them. Cowards are silent, condoning bad behavior in their ranks instead of doing what's right. I said before, you don't have to have public comment. Sorry, that was wrong. Per charter section four oh eight, the council shall make reasonable provision to allow persons in attendance at its meetings opportunity to speak. So it turns out you do, that includes special meetings and work sessions, you need to add it there. Charter section nine ten A has, any elected official of the town who willfully violates any material provision of this charter shall be deemed to have forfeited his or her office. This nine F two and three are attempts to violate our charter. Per nine ten B, I pre-vote the complaint, and includes Dan's violation from last month and these agenda items. I've left blank spaces for the names of anyone who votes for this. This complaint first goes to the clerk and then the council, but that's not the final word. Per four oh seven B, decisions made by the council under this section shall be re-subject to review by the courts. There's no honor here. Thank you.
Okay, next is Ted Natale. Okay, do I have to stand up?
Yeah.
Please, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we can, here. You'll be able to hear me.
Come on, Sherman.
Uh, Daniel Patterson, President, Exeter Town Council, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm writing even in advance of next month's council meeting, where the Board of Campuses is on the agenda. I have some concern that may arise, and I feel it should be explained to the town solicitor. The town had the pleasure of having Mr. Maruzak as our solicitor for almost thirty years, and his dollars was vast. My concern is, although our new solicitor is a bright young man, he does lack experience. At the January 3rd, two thousand five meeting, when Councilman Ellis had placed on the agenda on the new business, number nine G, Board of Campus Operations, Councilman Ellis proceeded to question me on my employment issues, and was followed up by Councilwoman De Francisco accusing me of employment issues. Solicitor Maruzak would have stopped them immediately, knowing what they were doing was against the open meeting law, and not allowed to bring up my employee issues in open. I would suggest that the new solicitor review the open meeting laws. That brings me to the next issue. Who am I employed by, and who has the right to question my employment? Rules have been put in place by the Rhode Island Board of Elections to protect members of the Board of Campuses from political attacks. It was quite obvious to me that's exactly what happened. The two members of Democratic Party accused a member, a Republican member of the Exeter Town Council of employment issues in open session. I would suggest that the new solicitor review the employment relationship between the town of Exeter, the Board of Elections, and a member of the Rhode Island Board of Campuses, Exeter Board of Campuses, if you would. Also, I'd also like the people to know, I'll be filing an open meetings, uh, complaint with the Attorney General now that the minutes have been approved, uh, with the Attorney General. I'm also waiting to hear from the Board of Elections concerning the complaint that Councilwoman Man De Francisco has filed against me concerning an incident that occurred at a early voting when I asked her to remove herself from an area as she was within fifty feet of the voting area. Again, now that the, I, phew, I wound up. Now that I have approved minutes, my attorney is looking into filing a complaint with the Board of Elections against the two Democratic members of the town council for interference. Thank you.
Okay, is this section one?
Go ahead.
Okay. Next is Angela Orellero, did I say that right?
I really am, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody gets it right. Um, I'm just here on the communications.
Can you come forward, please?
Oh, yeah. I'm here on the communications of number fifteen and eighteen that you're gonna be, I guess, doing later, and it's about the turnaround at the end of West Shore Drive. Um, they get familiar with it, right? Okay. So, um, I just wanted to make a couple points, that there's been residents on West Shore Drive that have been working on this problem for years, they've come to the town council meetings, and it's not only for the bus issue that's going on down there, but it's also for emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles can't get down there and turn around, there are houses down there. We had a fire truck a couple years ago, couldn't turn around down there and backed up, backed up into a pole, and caused tens of thousands of dollars worth of damage to not only the apparatus, but, well, the pole's still there, but, um, they still damaged that. So, it's not only about the bus issue, which is important, but it's also about the turnaround. We've had issues with this, they built a wall on that, we, the taxpayers paid to have the property surveyed, and then it just wasn't cleared enough to make the bus be able to turn around. If we had taken all of the property that was surveyed, when they did the, um, the surveying, then the bus would be able to hopefully turn around in that area. The bus has turned around in that area. Uh, when the manager comes down, it seems like the problem is the one bus driver, who's a little bit, um, just can't do it, I guess, I don't know. So, I, I would like to see that we could try to work out the options down there, before trying to move the bus turnaround to another area that includes private property, which is gonna open up another whole host of problems, like maintaining that private property, maintaining the runoff into the lake, and things like that. Um, so, I'm just here on behalf of those communications, that we maybe try to look at finishing the project down at the turnaround, so that the emergency vehicles, which is really important, I'm sorry, I wasn't moving this, and, and subsequently, the bus, and any other larger vehicle can turn around down there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And last is Wendy Federer Augen.
I wanted to discuss the same, um, thing. Um, I feel that although some work was done down there, more needs to be done down there to get those safety vehicles turned around. There's been some talk, I sit, um, I'm a member at large on the Board, only, there's been some talk about using the boat ramp to let the bus go in and out of. If anybody knows that road, you go down the hill, and then you come around a really sharp turn, that's where the boat ramp is. I don't feel that that's gonna be safe for children, or anybody coming down that hill not paying attention. Um, the boat ramp, it's a downhill climb. I know my husband has put, helped people put boats in and out of there, and they're always pulling up all the, um, ships, it's not gravel, it's the cart ships, I don't know what you call that. Um, and we don't need any more of that in the lake, then we've already got runoff in the lake all the time, so I feel that that's gonna be an issue. Um, I also feel like, again, as Angela said, that's private property, that we're, we are gonna have to maintain and ensure, if there's a public transit on it, that's gonna be an issue. So I, I also understand there's a question about a basketball hoop at the end, um, it's on someone's private property, so the bus is saying they can't turn around with it there, but there's, I don't know, five to eight more feet that the town owns that wasn't picked up on that first go-around. I know there's huge boulders, I know there is, and it's gonna cost more money, but the children's safety and our safety for fire trucks and ambulance is, are more important.
Okay, next is number nine, new business, Board of Campuses, operations, schedule, organizational hierarchy, access to county services and facilities, behavior, budget, and compensation.
I just wanted to start with, um, I talked to a number of different towns to see how they handled, uh, the organization of, um, their Board of Campuses, and most towns really don't have much of anything like we do, we really don't. And they have, uh, Jamestown, um, Charleston had a little bit, a little bitty blurb, which really didn't say much about it in their bylaws, so I guess some people have little blurs of that in the bylaws, but it doesn't really say what the chair does, what the clerk does, what the member does. Um, so I thought we should come up with something, um, like, I know Nancy has taken this over, 'cause it wasn't being done, but she does the agendas now, and she files it with the state, um, and then pretty much a lot of the work is, you know, updating the voter list, and there are various things that come in on the voter list, uh, so I thought we should get together, you know, and figure out something, if the bylaws change that needs to be done, then, you know, we would have to send it to, uh, the town, you know, at the election, we'd have to have a referendum or something. Or you could do it by a policy thing, uh, I'm not sure which would be the best thing, but I think it would be good if we had some sort of idea of the organization. But I guess most towns don't do it, you know, they don't. Because, uh, really, the Board of Elections, I also talked to a guy at the Board of Elections, um, the Board of, yeah, Campaign Finance, uh, and those, Peter, and he said, you know, they just have voting, you know, what to do with voting and that kind of thing, they don't really organize.
They don't have anything to do with the day-to-day operation.
They don't have the operation stuff, you know, so.
They don't?
I just thought that, no, they don't.
Alright.
That's for the town slash.
I don't know, I think that's something that we, maybe when we do the budget, we could go over that, and, you know, 'cause we're gonna be doing budget sessions then, and we'll be doing a budget session for the Board of Campuses, that we could figure that out and decide if we need a policy, or, you know, what we need. Policy is easier than a bylaw.
Research project, another one, right? Yeah. Okay. Can you have a discussion of this? Cal? You're all set?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not all set.
Yeah.
No, I'm not all set. Although I did tell these ladies earlier today I wouldn't say I would, but I just wanna say this. Uh, and Diane, we've all been around here for a while, but for years and years, things functioned here without any issues that I was aware of, and I know in speaking to Lynn, she doesn't seem to have seen any either. So, yes, you're right, there needs to be perhaps some kind of corrective action. I think that, um, the information that, or the suggestions that were made by, by treasurer are, are a really good start in terms of compensation, so that everybody is getting more, and they can do the work during the hours that we're here. And the reason, if you remember, the reason I raised the question, uh, that Ted's rate of speaking of employment was that I had understood that Lynn had been called out at least a couple of times over a weekend for alarm that was triggered, and that concerned me about why that happened, and whether or not people needed to be in the building other than the three hours of the week, which is what prompted me to ask. It really wasn't, I guess Ted considered, considers it an employment question, I just considered, I just wondered why that happened, which is why I raised the issue, which is why I opposed the, the agenda item the way I did, just to try to address that.
Well, that's something we, we could do, part of this is scheduling hours, you know, who schedules hours.
May I, may I say something?
There really isn't any.
Go ahead, Ted.
Uh, can I address Calvin?
Calvin?
No.
No?
What's the point? Ted, excuse me, Ted's already told us that he's filing a complaint against me.
That's correct.
So, go ahead, Ted.
Okay.
I really don't wanna say anymore, because I've tried to explain.
Very.
What I was doing, and Ted knows that, but I don't think that we need to get into it.
No, I only have one question, Calvin. What is the policy for a person being in the building?
We don't have a policy.
Oh, okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to say.
Can I just say, there are people that come in this building.
That's correct.
During the weekend, including Ken, whom I spoke to yesterday, who was working in the basement, and he comes in and out when he needs to because of a position that he has, and he needs to come in and out, because he's doing work for us, and he needs to do that. The Board of Campuses, I thought, had their office space, one day a week for three hours, that's all. I'm just asking why, why was more of that necessary, and no one would've known if Lynn hadn't had to be called up here, and so I just thought it was an issue that we ought to talk about. That's all.
Okay. So, most of this will be moved to the budget hearing?
Well, I, I agree.
Ken's gonna do some work on, do some research on a policy.
'Cause Maria's advice to us, I thought, was very well crafted.
When this first popped up, that's what, talking to Ken, is there a policy? 'Cause that's the guy that writes it, and he didn't have one. So I asked Patty, who's been here for a long time, and she said there wasn't one either, uh, there is no policy written to go forward.
No, and I think the only thing that the council here can really control is money spent and what's going on, what's in the budget, what was put in the budget, and address the concerns that have been raised about the hours that need to be spent.
Okay. Alright, you're all good on this side? Yep. Okay. Uh, new business, B, Emergency Management Director, Doris Ford, who reports, while we're in that pod, Rhode Island Department of Health, and to the mock room, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Good evening, honorable councilmen and women.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good, Council President. Yes, uh, we actually have a really great mock drill, and first I wanna tell you what the med pod is. It's a medical plan of distribution, so you all will know perhaps with the COVID, what happened with COVID. So the state comes down to each town, and us would like to work with each town, and it's with a plan to deliver either a vaccine shot or pills. So, because we are limited in resources with, uh, with our plans, we partnered with the Westridge Emergency Management Director, the Department of Health, and the Super
Yes, uh, we actually have a really great mock drill, and first I want to tell you what the med pod is. It's a medical plan of distribution, so you all will know perhaps with the COVID, what happened with COVID. So the state comes down to each town and we'd like to work with each town in with a plan to deliver either a vaccine shot or pills. So because we are limited in resources with, with our plans, we partnered with West Greenwich Emergency Management Director, the Department of Health, and the superintendent of schools because that's where the distribution centers are in the plan. This plan is approved by myself, my department, Exeter Fire One, Exeter Fire Two, and it's updated annually with any records of change being then sent to each of those signatories. So the schools in the plan, when I got it last two years ago, was for the high school in West Greenwich and the Met CAF Junior High. Last year, we added the Walloongong School because the Department of Health said that they really would like to see Exeter stay in home and be able to do, I don't know where you went for your COVID shots, Lynn, but it was, it would have been nice to have that service for Rhode Island's people. And I do know Lynn, that when they call and say, help, can you set up, can you set up your clinic in 24 hours? Yes. So now we can do it. We've proven that we did it. So we did, on February 18th, I worked with the school superintendent at the Walloongong School to do a mock drill. We didn't accept any patients or, uh, we just set up the tables and assigned it and then we, with a floor plan, walked through. Uh, we had volunteers, I had to work on recruiting volunteers and Sue Hoxley was instrumental and a huge thank you to her to get the volunteers to come. They were from the Fire District One. Asa Davis was there, thank you. Uh, he was very supportive. Cal came and Maria, Tian came. So it was, it was really great to see that kind of support for this because we can do it and that was showing that we can do it. So then we set up the, the drill. It was from 10 to 1. Pharma Health came in, their mock drill was very cordial and they said how, how well that we had done and things that we could look at to improve. Um, and some of those things are, the challenges would be volunteer recruitment because if you are going to set up a clinic, it's going to take shifts depending on what COVID was a kind of anomaly, but it could, it could be hard for us getting volunteers to, in doing, doing shifts, so that could be challenging. The EMT, I understand that the EMS actually had a contract and we'd have to get something.
Another question?
Yes.
Is it Job Corps doing a CNA program?
I think they are too.
There's a place for volunteers that have that program.
Yeah, actually.
I don't know who the director is or about.
Sue said she was going to see if you could touch them up as a plan because it was thought that the center, you know, the security is.
Oh, too tight. Oh, it's.
I mean, if they had a CNA program, there, there's kids that are getting into the door through the medical system.
That's great. So the EMS, you need to have somebody on.
Social? Uh, if there's, if you're going to be doing vaccines or shots, who would be, if you need a nurse?
The state brings in that.
The state does bring in.
That has to basically be any of two or something.
Yeah, nurse, they have a whole other.
It's a vertical.
Yeah, they bring in all their people and they weren't willing to do that, but we weren't ready for that. I thought we were really just setting up and showing up that we could set up the clinic was, was all that they were really looking for, but they could, we could have gotten to that maybe next year. But, uh, we do need an EMS EMT on the site and an actual event because if somebody has major reactions or whatever it is, they need to be transported. So that's going to, I, I want, I'm going to ask the council, what, what things you want me to do to, on the Blue Sky Day, kind of set that in motion. Is there an MOU? What kind of agreement would it be with EMS? I'm uncertain that territory.
Who? Good question for you. Um, the state director, is that still Mr. Gaynor?
No, um, he's gone off, he went to FEMA and then, and now it's Mark Pappas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought he was there a long time, so. So what do you, have you need a, a random understanding of what the Fire District, the ambulance?
The ambulance in particular, what would their role play? How would they get paid? Like, will we, there's a schedule, I'm, I'm really don't have to.
The Fire District.
Okay. The Fire District, so they have to investigate, see what they would need, um, because they, they weren't able to participate in the mock drill because it, they're always going to be called. So, um, she, who drove said that we would, we would need to set up something in advance from, they could propose that MOU and the council could review it. Okay. And what? How that would work. Okay.
Some of the other challenges.
Council question.
No, it wasn't a question, it was just an observation for you, uh, because Dory and I had spoken when she, I knew that this was happening and I asked if she'd perhaps like me to just come and visit for a while, which I did, and I couldn't stay for the whole drill, but they're very busy. I, it was, they were getting, as if something was going to happen, as if the state was coming in with their team, but they had to know that we had a place that was prepared.
Yes.
And that's what, that's what Dory was about. And as she said, there are elements that were probably missing from that, that.
Right, and that's why you practice.
Yeah, and that's why there was a, a drill and that's how she learned, I'm sure, what needed to be done because you probably never set one of these up before.
Not, I've been part of an already active clinic, but not personally set up.
Right, not being charged.
So this was exciting, yeah. Um, and then the security of the clinic, there's, so people could be very upset, you're going to need somebody there. So we know we have the town sergeant, um, and his, his people, again, I think, I don't know, again, but they make sure it's all by him and we have to also need some kind of thought process before an event to make sure that they have, we have coverage. And we could potentially look at West Greenwich's police if they would come in if we really, if it got really bad. I don't know that we'd ever get there, but those are just things that I thought about. Um, and so, um, I don't know what kind of briefing we'd have for them working up the clinic. That's, you know, a simple, I have a, same thing, just talk to, so, nothing. Okay, we, we can sit down and just see how that would work out in the event of it. So otherwise, it went flawless, the state was very unprosecuted, us being, you say that we can do it and then we actually showed that we can do it. So it was a good deal. And it's, it happens every year, um, and I can pick whatever school, um, because, well, the high school is much bigger, so I found out that all students go to all the schools, so it's, it's not really going to be, it could potentially not really be an only Exeter breakout of something. So it may just always include all the district, all the whole school district, so. But it's good to know that we can stand on the wrong, and so very proud of everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Dory.
It was really ambitious what, what was done there, it was quite a setup.
Okay, item C, social services director, Jessica DiMarino, report ongoing programs?
I, I did that, uh, that's just me, I know I promised not to say anything, but Jessica, as you know, provides us with monthly reports and there were just two, a couple of things that I just want to be sure the people that are here know about and anyone else that might need.
Yeah, I watch the Thomas Museum.
Well, that, that's, that's coming up, um, you know, a, a way to, to see the museum, I think it's 20, is it 20 people, I think that?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Uh, but, but the ongoing issues, I've heard people say, geez, too bad Exeter doesn't have a food bank. We do and it's reopening. Uh, Jessica speaks about the number of volunteers that came forward to help her set it up. It's still up at the church. Uh, eventually, Nosh was hoping that it would relocate to a, a new facility, but right now it's there. And this other village steering committee that she's been working on now for months has a group of 23 volunteers, but they, they are, this, this is a concept to provide people that need, uh, shut-ins, basically, that need some help, people that might need to be driven to a doctor's appointment. Like, there are services like that already, but this is the, this will be specific to Exeter and people could, could take advantage of that. So I just, you know, I just think it needs to be noted that there are some good things going on here. There's that handyman's service, you know, the people need something, and I'm talking about not you handy people and not, maybe me because I'm not that handy, but people that, that need help at, at home, that need a faucet fixed or something. And apparently it's, it's an ongoing issue, and I mean an ongoing service with the gentleman that lives here that's volunteered to do it, and the people only have to pay for the product. And this fellow gives a service, his time for nothing. That's a great thing, that people need to know that it's available. So, you know, I just, I just want to mention those. Her, her reports are quite thorough and I just wanted to give her a heads up. I told her I would speak to it and if she wanted to come, you know, she could have a fool, but she said, no count, you're the one that likes to talk, so that's what I said.
I put my name in for the visit, so hopefully we won the place by.
Oh, you're talking about going to the museum?
To the museum, to the.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Yeah, just in case the public doesn't know, it's on Thursday, March 20th at 11 o'clock, and they meet, um, uh.
You're ready?
At Summit Road, Exeter. I guess it's where they, I know I read it somewhere.
Yeah, meet up in Arcadia on Summit Road and there's an optional lunch afterwards.
But, but, uh, I just.
Then again, as an example, the people we have, the good people we have, like Dory and Jessica, and what, what, the work that they do to fill it out. And Jessica's part-time too, so.
Oh.
Same, in what?
She's with full-time.
Oh, Jessica, I, yes, Jessica?
She's full-time. She's part-time.
There are only a few full-time. Well, yeah, there's a few in the room here, but, uh, no, let me, one other thing I want to mention because nothing's been said about the parade, and I wondered if there was going to be one only because so many people ask and, and, uh, now Jessica's been working on that as well, and you should know it's the 50th anniversary parade here that happened, except during COVID, I think, a couple of years from then, of this. And, uh, the Eagle Scout, Ronald Woodmansey, who took that on as a project in 1975 to earn an Eagle Scout badge, that was, that was an ambitious project. Uh, he now lives, uh, I, I only learned this from her report. He now lives in New York and he is coming back and will be the, um, Grand Marshal of the parade, which he initiated 50 years ago. I'm glad I saw that while he was speaking, because if I had a chance to go back, then we could. I think that's important, 50-year-old parade, just because it passes by my house, it's not the only reason I mention it, um, anyway. I happen to have had one more thought, I happen to have been council president then, just so you know.
Fifty years ago?
All right, 50 years ago, okay, let's move on. That's a true story, let's move on.
Okay. Item D, Rhode Island Energy's joint poll petition, Narragansett Electric, Horizon Corporation Incorporated, Sony Lane installed pole seven peg 84, 40 foot south of pole seven across the street, they've installed anchors. This must be something they sent you for permission?
Yes, and I went to find the peg and it's not there, so I called the gentleman, they're going to come put it back and then I'll pay. I know the location and.
So you just need us to vote, give you approval to change it?
Once I see the peg where it's supposed to be.
But if we said no, they'd put it there anyway.
Well, I would still have to approve it and then bring it back to you next month.
So we can do it, subject.
But even if we say no, they're still.
Well, they're not going to put the pole there until we approve it. It's, it's.
But if you approved the spot and we said no, what are they going to do? Like?
They would have to get approval. I mean, they can't just do it. Town, town.
Yeah, like, but the last time one of these came across our, our, the table, I thought it was, they just do what they're going to do anyway.
Actually, I saw on our North Kingston's agenda a month ago, the same thing, they don't, they must do it in every city or town.
Sometimes, like, we've had to have them move the peg because it's not in the line of, like, it would be almost like have to swerve around it. So back it up a couple feet, you know, so that's it. Uh, should be pretty simple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Rhode Island Energy's petition to, what are you doing, putting a new pole or an anchor?
It's actually a, it's, um, it's a strand that's stretching across the.
There goes another pole.
That's strengthening the, you know, keeping that one straight, and it's on a dead tree right now, that's what it's moving.
Ah, so they put a pole in.
They're replacing dead tree with a pole.
Yeah.
That's nice. It is a dead tree.
Motion to approve, uh, Rhode Island Energy's application to fully do pole, get a guide wire and anchor.
Subject.
Sony Lane.
Subject to, subject to Rob to move.
Subject to Rob to move, public director. Okay.
Right.
So that way you don't have to bring it back to us.
Yeah. P, Rhode Island Energy Power Hour, surge, January 23rd, 2025, West Village Town. This was put on there in response to public comment last month. We need to send a letter of our concerns to Rhode Island Energy. Anything else they have to add?
Uh, no, I, I think, I think that probably Lynn can craft an appropriate letter from the information that's here and, um, would be nice to think we could get the same response from them that we got from DOT, but hey, let's give it a try. And because what she would describe to us.
I didn't give one of these to Ken last week.
Is more, is more than just a little frightening. It's lucky that she was home, so I don't know whether other people.
Well, there wouldn't be other people.
Excuse me, can you, can you explain what happened so the folks in here know what's going on?
Yeah, sure.
What happened to you?
Hi. Um, on January 23rd, 2025, a man hit a telephone pole in the vicinity, oh, I got my back to you, of, um, Weaver Hill Road, down that, down that area.
Kids Corner Road.
Kids Corner Road, yep.
By Division Street.
By Division Street. I've got, I've got, I, I was at my house, so I don't know exactly where the pole is, but it, um, very fiercely put out power in two towns, Exeter and West Greenwich. I mean, it wasn't just the lights going out, there was spitting and sputtering and all kinds of things. At that point, um, I smelled something funny, though it was in the dark. So I went around my house with the flashlight and realized that the, uh, surge box behind my television had started like burning the wall. It was all, so, all over, the box exploded. I went down to my basement, pulled the main because I didn't, I didn't want things to catch fire, I wasn't sure. And I was going to get an electrician in the morning to come and put my power back on, make sure there wasn't anything wrong. In the meantime, I went downstairs to put, um, wood in the fire because I had started a fire, so, because now I had no heat. And, um, all of a sudden, the, um, whole house surge protector caught fire. Uh, this is when they restored the power, is when that happened. So I had, that, basically two issues, and now the Narragansett Electric Company is saying that they put three times the power through the poles, through the wires, when they were restoring power. But I had outages when the power went out. So to me, it looks like it was when it went out and when it came back. Either way, they put power through the poles, the wires, three times what should have been, possibly twice. And.
Right.
Okay.
So how, why, and we don't want this to happen, that, you know, people are afraid to leave now because you don't know when the house is going to burn down. If I wasn't there, my house would have burnt down. I put the fire, I called the fire department, um, by batting it with the tablecloth.
Is there any motion?
So.
Do we want to make a motion, Cal? Or we do, we already make one?
I think we do.
Okay. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, proposed amendments to town council bylaws, section 102, regularly be scheduled possible change to start timing meetings. Section two, uh, number two, section 113, board of business, possible removal of public comment. Number three, section 114, agenda, oral communications from the public, possible removal of references to public comment portion of agenda. Uh, the first item is where we want to go from 7 to a 6:30 start. The other two I had thrown on here just for discussion, if anybody wanted to discuss it. Anything we do, this has to be introduced tonight, if one's correct, and then voted on the next month's meeting, sorry. Anybody have any questions?
I don't really care, we have it at 6:30 or 7:00, I just probably, in the spring and fall. I just probably in the spring and fall, summer, I'm coming right from work here. I'll be hungry, and I'll get me, and that's it. We have to be fast meeting.
Is 6:30 the earliest that?
I could never make it six o'clock.
Okay, okay.
I can make it 6:30.
I can do 6:30.
Well, you, I'm retired, you call it. I was here today, Lynn was here, and she said, why don't we do it during the day? And you were there. She was kidding.
No.
I have it in one, but I know others.
She was kidding, because she knew that. She just said, hey, I'm here, okay, I'll do it here. You want to do 6:30, do 6:30.
Okay, so we can move that one to next month for vote on that. The other two items, does anybody want to do anything with that?
Actually, I don't want to remove the public comment. I like it, you know, I get to listen to various people, so.
It's nice that the public has the opportunity to see things before you. I like to keep it on.
Okay.
And thank you for all the people who spoke, with their three minutes.
Yeah, I was going to say, tonight is a bit unusual, but it's a good thing that there are people here that had issues they wanted to bring to our attention. It's not always like that, as we know.
I have a question on public meeting. Okay, those three minutes for us, yeah? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Stand up, please, Dave, so I'm deaf, raised deaf, so.
Okay. Now, on the three minutes, where, you know, the public is allowed three minutes for comment. Can somebody yield their three minutes to another individual to give that individual six minutes?
Well, you can continue, you can continue. If I was reading something, right, and then my three minutes are up, you could stay, come up and continue it and read. Because I did that during a meeting with, somebody asked me to read a statement.
They have to be signed in.
Three-minute, three-minute time limit per person.
Per person, yeah, per person. But someone else could finish the comment.
Yeah, someone else could finish the comment, is that correct?
If they were signed in.
I mean, I'm just asking, because I feel that that's a question that may come up, you know?
So I'll make a motion for next month, the only one to put on is Section 102, Regularly Be Scheduled Possible Change to Start Time Meetings, 6:30.
Yeah, be specific that we're going to change it to 6:30.
Yeah, yeah. This was discussed a couple of months ago, so that was my motion, yeah.
Second?
Yeah, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
The other two and three?
The other two were not, you know, actioned, so. Next is G, Reciprocal Inspections and Agreement Between Town of Exeter and Neighboring Towns? Was that you who put that up?
You, was, last month when you appointed the East Greenwich government official? You said.
That's what I thought it was, so.
There was discussion that maybe we should have some sort of agreement in case we ever have this problem, you know? We have the need in the future.
It's not.
Council said to put it on.
So for that one, we would have to probably send a letter to the town manager of East Greenwich. And that would be, you get to draw up a little agreement. Yes, there.
So just East Greenwich?
Well, East Greenwich said that they were.
Right. But this time around, so any other towns in the future, East Greenwich not available?
I'll find out if they are.
Kind of have to be like a generic agreement, like we did with the traffic details.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have mutual aid agreements with certain running towns.
I think it was all the towns in the state.
Some of them didn't come back, North Kingston didn't want to do it.
So there is something to start with a guideline, okay? I guess keep that on till next month.
To see if they're interested in the first place.
Yeah. But I mean, that's where you can start to do this, two or three years ago, we had to do that with, they were police departments. And you can't get anybody.
No, can't get anybody to work.
Okay, all right, the next item is Library Board of Trust.
So I'm just passing this out now, that feels best to describe it in person, then try to send it to you in email, description. Is there any draft policy that the Library Board believes is necessary? Because the Champlin Foundation, who's one of our biggest donors, or is our biggest donors, is requiring this from any organization they. So this was a two-page document, we got it down to what you see in front of you. And it's just, the intent is that Champlin would like to see a commitment on behalf of the board members, the financial commitment. We took out the exact dollar amount committed or requirements committed. And, you know, the board knows it's necessary. We don't know how, how much detail or in-depth Champlin will get involved, which I just want to know that we have one. And if you read it, it's pretty innocuous when it comes to any kind of follow-up on it.
They're requiring the members to donate money?
They want a giving policy, that's what they want, right? And so the board requested that the council approve it, because you approve the board members, right? So we don't want to set up someone that's coming to volunteer to be a board member, not, you know, all of a sudden, spring this on. But right now, there is no dollar amount on hand, there's no required monetary gift, it's just a guideline. And so the board requests that the council review it, and maybe have a solicitor's opinion on what he thinks. If I to you, and send it back to the board.
See, this year, I remember the Barnum Library, Barnum Continental, whatever, the Life of the Museum up there. This year, when we paid the dues, it's like, it's thirty-five for forty dollars a year. This year, they get money from Champlin. They broke it down into three different categories on the renewable. Would you donate to capital improvement, or if you want to donate to the Barnum House? And then there was another thing, so they must be saying things.
Right.
Yeah, and keep in mind that you pay dues to that organization.
These ones don't.
This is how library board, there are no dues that.
The way you're reading, these people are volunteering, and someone wants to squeeze them for money.
And that's not the town's intent, the board's intent, that's.
This is the Champlin Foundation throwing all this out there.
Right, and we don't have the same kind of board setup and government setup as maybe the largest cities that have endowments and big donors and.
I, when I, I saw this, and I thought, what is this library? I quote and ask, and because it's shared, as you know, and I was quite surprised to hear that.
So we got it all down to another, the third bullet, we'd done sufficient for our purposes.
Will you need our approval for this?
Well, yeah, but I'd also like to find out, you know, if it's a legal document. So what happens when someone now wants to apply for the board, and we spring this on them after their benefit?
By the way.
Because the council's already approving for the board.
We don't, let's not tell them that first, let's see.
Well, this, or whatever group thing should be attached to when we post.
Right.
This should be go along with the posting, so people are well aware of what they're getting into.
Can I say something? Vice Chair of the Library Board.
Are you, are you a member of the Library Board?
I'm the vice chair.
She's the vice chair.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to hear Sheila's observation about this.
We discussed this, like, two or three meetings. It wasn't like an instant thing when that came through. And we were all concerned about, you know, finding someone who had enough knowledge and ability to be on the board, and all of a sudden, you spring on them, but you can't do it unless you give a thousand dollars or something like that. And so we were very specific with the wording, to make sure that no one had to, or had to do a specific amount. It was just, because if Champlin, if we want to go for grants, Champlin's requiring this, then where are we?
So it doesn't really require people to get on the board, to give two cents?
Exactly, and they're saying, we want, you know, an intern saying that you're willing to give as well. They're not specifying an amount.
So you need our solicitor to look at this and say, get his opinion on it?
I know how a government entity can afford somebody and tell them that they have not given money.
I think that's right.
I don't know if that works like that.
Can it be proposed as a suggestion? A suggestion?
Yeah, we're not in a rush, you know, so it's just, now it's time.
Well, it struck me, I mean, like, Barnum is a private, it's a nonprofit, it's not a government entity. But I know when I did addition, I'm like, wow, this is different, so probably because of this.
Have other libraries instituted this? How, like, in municipal libraries?
They haven't just talked about that one yet, but they are all moving towards it. This is new for Champlin, this spring upon the, like, as you said, your group even, like, is Champlin's. For some reason, Champlin feels. Yeah.
But you've got to think about it from a Champlin perspective, when they say, oh, you'd like us to fund, and I forgot, there were big projects that Champlin has funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you've got to, you've got to realize that somebody there might say, well, do these people, are they supportive of the library themselves? It shouldn't only be you, though, I mean, the board, it should be, are you doing fundraising and raising money and stuff? Which I would think.
Yeah, it should be the number two bullet point there.
Which was.
Provide leadership and actively advocate early public library.
Which is what you do, so.
So we will continue that till next month, and we'll just.
We'll continue that and ask that it be revisited.
Okay.
Ask that it be revisited, lay back on, next month.
Okay, item, item I, Department of Public Works Requesting to Go Out to Bid Gasoline Delivery. You're up, Rob.
Yeah, it's pretty much what it says, now that Tamp will be pretty much up and running, probably mid-month, I need to start securing some gasoline deliveries.
Okay. I think they put a thousand there, okay?
Yeah.
Not a sample deal, is it?
No.
Yeah, we're waiting for the weather to break.
No, just waiting for my permits to have everything in line before we do it, so.
And once they put everything together and sorted, then they send the Williams family room?
Yeah, they won't, we won't pay it till it's, part of the deal is they'll set it up, but, you know, part of their deal is also to help us with permitting problems. So it's, we're making our way right through that, so.
I'll make a motion that Rock can go out to bid for gasoline delivery. Second?
Second?
Second.
Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 10, unfinished business status, welcome sign, in and out of town?
I have not heard back from the sign person, and I believe that anyways, we're going to have to go out to bid. For any kind of quality, long-lasting sign.
Item B, status, seeing as she was still here, Rhode Island 250 Commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission. Any updates?
Yeah, I don't have anything new right now.
C, Town Government Buildings Uses and Improvement Plans, 675 Tanrod Road, Status, Basement Water Litigation?
The departments have started cleaning out their sections on their. So they're coming to rework the middle of April. So the departments have started, they're all looking towards cleaning up their sections. I'm going to make a. I'm getting water now.
Everything is from the.
Most everything, you said.
It's going to be centered.
Everything will be centered.
Okay.
You're going to have to get some sort of storage.
I'm going to have to get a storage unit for some of that, because they all can't, it's got to be out of the way.
Yep.
They're going to be building a trench around the edges. Fill in the rock when they do it. So, yeah.
I just heard we couldn't get a new chip ring overnight Wednesday, Thursday, so. But maybe, well.
It won't go in the basement.
It won't have a waterfall.
Well, now that we're going to fix it, we'll probably never see it in the front, never mind, it's just.
We'll leave that on there for next month. Number two is 742 Tanrod Road, Status, Architectural Services.
Mustard Ral, said he would have the draft service contracts by next week. Maybe next week. And I'll send them out right away.
Okay, we go there again? Number 11, Communication, nobody told any, and just the executive session. Call for a brief five-minute recess.
Just a fast session.
Ready?
I know, that's right up here.